We band of brothers, for he today that sheds his-
Don't worry, John, you're safe.
Heard about it all the time, but they're gonna close it down.
Good evening, and welcome to the April 23rd, 2014, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from April 9.
I moved their approval.
You moved their approval? Okay, is there a second?
Check it.
There we go. Jim? I sent in a correction to Ann already, under correspondence. The name of the organization that I work for now is the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. I trust that's just changed in the final copy. Were there any other comments or questions or corrections that you saw?
Missing words count?
Share them.
In number five, the next to the last sentence, Reese, I think you want to say Reese said, if the responses would differ? Or responded, or something?
No verb there, that's the problem, huh?
Thank you for that.
Other observations that we should note? Clarifications? All in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections noted? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Rebecca, that might be you.
Okay.
Thank you.
She wasn't here.
Sure morning, your day and the sun, who abstained?
Then you take it away.
All right, next up, correspondence. Bill, anything from staff?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Anything from up here? I'll note with thanks that there are some new readings up, online, linked from the commission's homepage. And we're still learning how to do this. We're maybe a week behind the schedule that we would have hoped for, in terms of first meeting, second meeting of the month. Three of them make an interesting trio, that you might want to look at, all around the ideas of place-making and development of currently vacant urban sites. And one of them includes an idea of Walmart building smaller and mixed-use and much more urban than we've ever imagined Walmarts. The other one is one that I put in. It's an interesting sort of summary review of a topic that we haven't talked about here much, on peak oil. Where did that topic go, and is peak oil happening or not? The article claims it did happen in 2005, back when we used to talk about it, and that it's currently being masked by fracking, but then it goes on to explain what that mask might mean. And might mean to our economy in particular. So I think the planning implications of that are sort of long and deep. Anyway, so, we'll find a time, I guess at the next meeting, to have a chance, if anybody wants to talk further about those. Next up, Joel, Transportation Commission?
This is an easy one. The Transportation Commission meeting on April 10th was canceled, and the next scheduled meeting, I believe, is, well, it's the first, the second Tuesday, or the second Thursday in May, and I believe that's the 8th, and I will be in Italy at the time, so you may note that, in terms of our next meeting on Wednesday, I will also meet up, miss that.
I see. Okay, we'll put that down now. All right, thank you. I should pause and welcome, and thank, I suppose, instructors who are responsible for building our audience. It's so much more fun to have an audience than to do this to a set of chairs. This is the chance, when you all get to speak, the A-students will be speaking first. It's called the open microphone, and members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda, or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Any takers? We'll proceed on to our first public hearing, and here I have to thank Art Betke. He gave me this dog-eared, tattered sheet. This is the play-by-play for tonight. The way a public hearing works is, I will open the hearing, the community development staff will present information, and then, in this case, Bill, it's a little bit different line-out than here. It talks about an applicant, but we'll have a space for public comment regarding the project or the proposal here, since this is a legislative action. We'll gather some testimony, I'll close the hearing, the commission will engage in discussion of the issues, and then we'll vote on our recommendation to the city council.
Bill? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. The first item for you is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the city code regarding the permitted or allowed use of mortuaries within the neighborhood business, the general business, and the motor business zoning districts. In early spring of this year, staff received an inquiry regarding a potential structure addition, accessory structure for the Schwartz Funeral Chapel, located on Sixth Street here in city Moscow, and after further research, it was determined that that use was located within what we consider to be a legal non-conforming classification. Currently, within the neighborhood zoning, neighborhood business zoning district, mortuaries or funeral homes are not listed as a permitted use underneath the zoning code that was most recently adopted in 1990. After further research, it was identified that the city had issued a special use permit for that establishment and for that use in that location in 1981. At that point in time, it was somewhat unclear, after some further research, what the authority existed at that time for the issuance of the special use permit. Shortly after that determination, we received a letter of request from the owner of Schwartz Funeral Chapel to explore the possibility of allowing mortuaries as a permitted principal use within the neighborhood business zoning district, and that was carried forward to the commission for the commission's consideration, at which time the commission decided it would like to proceed with a proposed amendment. In staff's research of the issue, we identified that there were a number of similar incompatible uses within the neighborhood business district that were currently permitted, certainly those that provided skilled clerical professional and other skilled services, as well as churches, convents, monasteries, synagogues, and mosques. So with respect to the type of services that were rendered, as well as the parking and operating characteristics, there were other uses within the neighborhood business district that appeared to be consistent and compatible with mortuaries. We also looked at other commercial districts within the city code to look at places where they would be appropriate to be allowed. At the time of the review and currently under city code, they are only identified within the central business and the general business district as conditionally permitted uses. After the commission's review and staff's report, the commission felt it would be appropriate to allow mortuaries as a permitted use within the motor business district, to change the classification within the general business from a conditionally permitted use to a principal permitted use, and also to allow the use as a permitted principal use within the neighborhood business zoning district. So the ordinance is before you this evening, would, it's fairly simple in its content. Those are the changes that it would implement, and with that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Any questions up here for Bill?
It's pretty straightforward.
We've seen this before, and I think it looks like what we saw and discussed in the past. Yes. If there is any member of the public that would like to make comments on this proposed amendment, please come to the podium, state your name, and share with us your thoughts. I'll close the public portion of the hearing, and invite the commission to discuss the proposed amendment.
It looks like what we've seen and what we've discussed, so I don't know if there's much more to say.
Thank you. We'll get that much in the record. We've seen and discussed this previously. So, is there a motion? Joel?
I would make a motion to approve the draft as we have presented to us, which includes mortuaries as allowable uses.
Okay. Second? Second? Take Gregory's. And this is an approval of a recommendation to council.
Correct.
All right, moved in second. I'll send your resistance to discuss it before the, I'm gonna take as resistance to discuss it now. So all in favor of approving this proposed amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. Thank you all, thank you, Bill, for your work on that. We now have another public hearing, playing by the same rules, proposed amendment to Title IV of Chapter VI, to allow tandem off-street parking configurations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission again. What you have before you is another legislative amendment. In the spring, of this early spring of this year, we received a request from a developer looking at a multifamily residential project to consider and recognize parking spaces that were furnished in a tandem configuration as counting towards, or at least partially counting towards, their off-street parking requirement underneath the city code. Currently, the city code and the zoning code includes specifications for the required parking that a developer may need to provide for different types of land uses, whether residential or commercial developments. The zoning code has a development standard for those off-street parking areas, both dimensionally as well as structurally, for the pavement section, base, landscaping, curbing, and other elements. Well, the one thing that code is somewhat silent on is the recognition or the allowance of tandem parking spaces, that is, where parking spaces are placed in a row, where you'd have to travel through one parking space to reach a second parking space. That has been a traditional configuration parking that has been recognized for single-family and two-family developments in the residential arena. It has not been one that has been recognized in the past or allowed in the past for multifamily projects. You end up with somewhat lesser coordination, you know, the parking lots serve as a pooled resource for all of the residents within that project, and so tandem parking does require some level of coordination of movement of vehicles to gain access to other spaces, and that has been somewhat of a element of concern for recognition of tandem parking within multifamily projects. We did complete some research, and presented that to the commission early, looking at communities within the region, including Pullman, Post Falls, Lewiston, Missoula, Boise, and Coeur d'Alene, and looking at whether they recognize or allow tandem parking in residential, multifamily residential settings. It was fairly consistent that they were recognized in single-family and two-family developments, somewhat less so in multifamily configurations, although we did find three communities that did allow them under certain terms and conditions. We discussed some of the aspects of the operational challenges in tandem parking in a multifamily configuration, and in the context that we were approached, it was that they wished to provide garaged spaces that would be available inside for use of the residents, and that there would be a parking stall in front of that garage door. And so, after discussion by the commission, looking at either the potential loss of functional parking due to having to coordinate the movement of vehicles, the potential functional loss of garage spaces being utilized possibly for storage of personal goods rather than for parking, the commission felt that some level of recognition would be appropriate to allow for the amenity of covered parking to be furnished in a multifamily setting, and to have that be partially recognized for the parking requirements, and also because of the fact that it would slightly reduce the amount of impervious surface by having parking underneath the structure. And so that there were reasons why we would look at recognizing parking in that configuration, but that we would potentially start as a lower percentage of recognition, so that the relative risk and the availability for guests and visitors that may come to the site, that there would still be some parking that would be available that would not be in that tandem configuration. Staff has prepared a ordinance that would clearly state, and would amend, Chapter VI of Title IV of city code, to specifically state that tandem parking would be allowed for spaces that serve single-family, two-family, twin-home, and townhouse dwellings, and that it would be allowed for multifamily dwellings under the following conditions. The first of which is, the purpose of the parking design is to provide enclosed garages for the multifamily dwelling residence use. The second would be, the tandem parking spaces are assigned and furnished for use by the occupants of a single dwelling unit without separate additional compensation. And the fourth is, that the garage spaces shall be accounted as only one-quarter of a parking space towards satisfying the number of required off-street parking spaces for the multifamily use. With the recognition of only 25 percent, if some are utilized for storage, some are less available due to maneuvering, and some would be available, and the need for some that would be available for guests, that, you know, you wouldn't want to be blocking in somebody else's garage, we felt that would be a way to move toward the recognition of tandem parking in that type of development situation. So, that's what is before you this evening, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions the commission may have at this time.
Questions for Bill?
I have a question. Is the one-quarter, is counting the garage as one-quarter space enough to address the concern, which was put forth as having large paved surface areas and a large excess of parking spaces? That, as I understand, is that, it takes four garages to count for one parking space?
Correct.
Is there, is that going to have a practical effect, as opposed to counting it as one-half?
Certainly, the more that you count, the more value you give to the space, then the less additional onsite parking that would need to be furnished. And then, the question becomes, is there a functional concern of availability or adequate available parking? Twenty-five was somewhat of a conservative number, because we did have concerns of, you know, somebody doesn't have the garage door opener with them and parks in front of the garage, so the next individual that's in that dwelling unit comes in, and either has to try to jockey the vehicles, or they just swing into an available parking space that's not in a tandem configuration, and pretty much that one entire parking space now becomes unavailable. So, yeah, I think there were concerns, if we were going to do it, that staff felt maybe starting at somewhat of a conservative level, see how we feel that the developments function, how the parking is utilized, and then if we wanted to increase that recognition in the future, we could. But that certainly is up to the commission, as to what recommendation you'd like to provide.
Other questions for Bill? Bill, I'm interested in sort of the political dimension around the desire to provide parking. That is, who's ox gets gored if we skip on parking? And therefore, who's into city council to say P and Z messed this one up?
You'd like me to answer the question?
Yeah.
So if you have, so if there's inadequate off-street parking to serve a development, the relative impacts, or where those impacts are felt, are going to depend upon the context that that project sits within. If it sits within an area where there is available off-street parking, then that parking will overflow into the on-street parking. If you are in a location, and many multifamily projects are in a location where there may not be on-street parking available, if the roadway moves up into a collector or arterial status, then you have less availability of on-street parking. Typically, those roadways, not always, but certainly arterials generally have a limited off-street, on-street parking allowance, and collectors potentially have more so. But if you're in a situation where there is not any on-street parking available to meet that overflow demand, then you may see spillover into adjacent private development parking lots where parking, you know, is accessed, or on the side streets off of the main arterials or collectors that maybe provide access to that development, where there may be on-street parking that is available. As parking moves from the interior private site into the public roadways, then they certainly can impede upon the function of the roadway, can impede upon snow removal, maintenance, and other activities if it becomes more heavily utilized, and it can compete within that existing area. So, you know, the impacts are going to depend on whether you're located out on Baker, or you're located in an area that's a more urbanized, smaller roadway configuration, and it really largely depends upon the uses that surround you, the available on-street parking, and how the relative uses in that vicinity are utilizing the parking resources that are available.
Have you had completely clear on the, how it's, how it would be managed with 25 percent, essentially, with a 25 percent rule? I mean, you know, so doesn't it require some kind of cooperation in who rents what unit, and whether they get the tandem spot, or the, that's where I'm confused, is-
Well, the 25 percent is only what we would recognize. So at the time of development, we're looking at a plan where you are counting parking spaces. Each of those parking spaces that would be in a tandem configuration, and that'd be the end space in that tandem configuration, would only be counted as a quarter. And so, in counting the number of spaces that are available on the site, those would only be counted as a fractional parking space towards the total that are required underneath the zoning code. So currently, you have 1.25 parking spaces for a one-bedroom, 1.75 for a two-bedroom, and .75 per bedroom for three or more, as the off-street parking requirement for multifamily uses. And so, as we tally that in the project, we would only recognize those to that certain percentage. So if all of them ended up being occupied as storage for bikes or personal goods, you know, we haven't lost all of the spaces, we've only lost essentially every four of those garages that ended up filled with that, we lose one of the spaces that was required. The specifications or the requirements in the draft would require that both the space in the garage and the space behind it would be assigned to the, to individual users of a single unit, to avoid having to coordinate with your neighbor, can you move your car so I can get out?
Right.
So that it was contained within an individual dwelling unit. And this would provide, you know, this would provide a new option that really currently isn't recognized or available underneath the code, or as we have interpreted the code and administered it.
I was just observing, I don't know how to be precise about how that's going to affect any given neighborhood, but already, we see some housing units flowing out into the street, into the public parking, and some don't, you know? And so, on Third, after Hayes, down to Blaine, and around there, you see parking constantly filled up on the street, and it's hard to determine why, because I think sometimes people just, it might be closer to their unit, they might decide there's a place that they can get to, but you've got to kind of wind around and get to it, and so you just park in the street. It's, I guess it gets pretty complicated to try to divine whether it's going to impact, how it's going to impact any given neighborhood. You go by some apartment units, and it seems like the cars are all in the lot prescribed. Some are out on the street, and those don't seem, it's hard to predict, I think, why that happens. So it gets to be a kind of a trial and error to see, oh, how did it work? But it works over on this part of town, one way, and it works over here, another, just as you pay attention to those. So I'm saying it's hard to answer your question.
Other comments or thoughts for Bill, before we go on and take public testimony?
I just had a thought about the question about separate additional compensation, and how the statute here, the section, basically conveys that the person can't be charged extra, or-
Correct, and-
That has the garage?
And that's, they can be charged extra in the rent for the unit.
Okay, all right.
But what we have-
But nothing that's-
But not separate.
Right, right.
So that it has to be, if they're going to rent the unit-
Got it.
-the parking is furnished with the unit.
Okay.
And that is an issue that we have encountered rather recently, where there were garage spaces that were presented on a project as satisfying the parking requirement, and then all of a sudden, they were being denied to the, well, offered to the tenants for an additional $X hundred a month to rent. If the tenants didn't want to pay for that, then effectively, the parking wasn't being provided or being available as is required under the city code. Then they became proposed for renting for off-site mini-storage use for individuals that didn't reside on the property. So, if the intent is that we're going to count these towards parking, even fractionally, that we want to make sure that they're dedicated and provided and made available for that use.
Right, but the rent could be, this apartment is-
We're not saying what somebody can rent.
Yeah.
We just don't want to have, you know, the price so high that nobody wants to pay for the garages, and now they're effectively not being, parking is effectively not being provided, because they're being priced out of them.
Right.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Well, okay, I think we've exhausted ourselves with you, Bill.
In a good way.
Moment for public comment. I will call the attention of the commission to an email that arrived earlier today, I believe, from Victoria Seaver, which I distributed before the meeting. Victoria is speaking in favor of the thing we're considering. Is there other public testimony? Hearing none, I will close the public comment period, and open it up to conversation amongst the commission members.
Seems like we've covered it pretty well.
Okay, seems like we've discussed this again in the past, and seemed to ask staff to go forward with it, so I would think, I think we're in pretty good shape.
While you have the floor, would you like to make a motion?
I would move that the ordinance for tandem parking be approved as presented by staff.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca, second. And this is our recommendation again to council. Last chance for comment. All right, all those in favor of recommending the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, another one carries. Ann? Thank you. We are now up to number eight, which is our continuing discussion of our budget request. Last item in our package, our budget request for next year. I note that the text of it describes use for things, including a subscription to Planning Commissioner's Journal, and just thought, or similar professional learning resources. That certainly doesn't exist. Anyway, Bill and I and Wendy had some conversation between meetings about this, and the thought that in the past, we have earmarked these funds to try to facilitate professional learning by the board, and that we would like to continue that, and maybe to be more explicit amongst ourselves, the thought that if there is a good resource coming here to town, perhaps brought by the university, that we might want to say yes, and we'll spring for another day's lodging, or some other piece that would extend that, and bring that opportunity to the commission and to the public in this forum, or maybe it would even be in an afternoon forum. But anyway, to try to leverage our money by inviting that we would partner with others for things that were already here in town, or we were trying to attract to town. Any further thoughts about the budget that we would request, that we would like to submit?
It's a pretty vast fund, budget. Think you can get it through council?
Bill and I are adopting the strategy that we're not changing the dollar amount from the past, so that John won't notice. Any other discussion?
Well, I just would add, specifically targeting, bringing in someone who could talk knowledgeably about accessory dwelling implementation within their own communities, so that we can get maybe a planner's point of view of how they implemented it, what the tone of the community was, what the acceptance was, and- was, what the acceptance was, and what their, why they came to the ordinance that they came to.
Great. Since that's a major piece of the work that we're trying to do.
Seems like our biggest initiative right now, so.
I guess we need a motion to make this request to council. And Wendy, do you want to...
I so moved to recommend this budget to be used for continuing ed or other educational enhancement through the subscription to the, well, yeah, I guess I so moved when it's written here. How's that?
Wendy's right. This is her second.
I'll second.
Jim? Thank you. All in favor of recommending this budget to council? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order that we ought to know about tonight?
We need to give students something to write about.
Oh, there was no contention, there was no...
They got off easy, didn't they?
So, I can see two A's over here. Then there's the B, and then the C, and there's got A. That's a good... All right. With that, yes, Bill, sorry.
Back on May 14th, we'll have a public hearing in a subdivision. It's bound to be a little bit more contention.
Thank you. Another opportunity to see public process at work. Thank you. All right. With that, we're adjourned.